At our schools. Wolfon Elementary have a visit from Lucky the Lion, also Mrs. Graham worked with the Battle of Books. And then at River Heights Elementary, nearly 200 students, we just heard about this, will have the opportunity to receive a new pair of athletic shoes thanks to the grant that was achieved through the Mayo Health Systems for supporting our school's award. Also Veterans Day and then a rally of activities, crafting, puzzles, games, and yoga. And then finally at Okanda Elementary School, there's a nice example of the fifth grade students sharpening their math skills with some fun pumpkin math activities. Also the Veterans Day and then fifth grade inductee into the prestigious 30 Book Club. So great job to all of our elementary schools, middle school and high school. Another month well done.
Excellent. And next up, we have our student representative, Communications. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the school board. Once again, thank you for inviting us back to share the recent activities happening within our school.
FPLA has a busy schedule this December. They are ringing bells for the Salvation Army and are holding their FPLA Christmas Party. Additionally, they plan on baking cupcakes and then selling them along with cotton candy and holding a miracle minutes during halftime at the Boys Basketball Games on December 13th, 2024. For the prematurity awareness event, all proceeds will go to the March of Dimes. FPLA members are also busy studying and preparing for the upcoming regional competition on February 1st.
This is the third year that we have taken teams to the finance pool in Eau Claire. This is an awesome opportunity to show their strengths in different ways besides on the playing field. This year, the team of Brody Thornton, Rex Strout, Rick Pember, and Luke Pember won the competition and will be traveling to state on May 21st.
The bands will begin their formal concerts on Monday with their first performances in the auditorium. The concert will feature the jazz ensemble Mustang Band and Wind Symphony. On another note, the three MHS choirs will be performing their winter and holiday repertoire at their annual winter concert on Monday, December 16th at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. Admission is free, but they will be accepting pre-will donations for their upcoming trip to New York City.
Host of Future Health Professionals is preparing to compete regionally in various events such as medical math, CPR, first aid, medical terminology, and more. This is All Science Transcripted Credit Course, Intro to Early Childhood Education, just finished their observation hours at local childcare centers in Menominee. Special thank you to Staff, Sunshine, Milestones, and Rockin' Bees. These hours, in conjunction with the course, earn the students their infant and toddler certifications and assistant childcare teacher certifications. Congratulations to those students.
Creative Writing Club ended up with an attendance of over 20 students who wrote approximately 140,000 words in the month of November. Students who participated should be very proud of all the work they contributed. They also voted to continue the club with a meeting once a month before and after school. These kids are passionate about writing and demonstrate just how much you can do with a goal and a community of support. The Student Council Community Engagement Committee, also my committee, held their first Service Saturday with Feed My People Food Bank in Eau Claire. Together, we helped distribute free meals to over 220 families before Thanksgiving. We are eager to continue to give back to our community with more Service Saturdays in the future.
As we approach this holiday season, Student Council has some fun things planned for setting students on break. The week before break, we will be having holiday dressing days. So Monday is Polar Express Day, which is pajama day. Tuesday is Happy Tuesday, which is ugly sweater day. Wednesday is Grinch versus Santa, where the freshmen and sophomores will wear green and juniors and seniors will wear red. Thursday is Christmas Vacation, so wear Hawaiian, and Friday is Santa's workshop, so holidays here.
For December, Student Council had plans to have a friendly door decorating competition between study halls, but due to a recent push for study halls being for academic purposes only, we are no longer able to hold the event sadly. Students are disappointed by this, but Student Council is continuing to brainstorm ideas to engage the student body in December. Likewise, this year's Cabin Fever Week is going to look a lot different than it has in previous years. Teams will no longer participate in study hall games for the week, which was much loved by the student body, leaving the scavenger hunt and the dance.
Thank you for your time and happy holidays.
I guess I'll have to retrain and I apologize for the study hall being used for academic purposes, but that has been a real emphasis. And you know, tonight we're going to be looking at school report cards and when we look at the high school report cards, we really would like to see some improvement there. The directors and I have been visiting the high school during study hall periods throughout the fall and definitely an area where we see the improvement needed. That's not to say that some fun things can't still happen. I know Mr. Drake does really good at balancing those things, but you can tell him I'm the Grinch, not Mr. Drake.
Thank you so much for being here tonight and sharing all that with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Community Communications. Looks like we have four speakers tonight. First up is Josie Hillman.
My name is Josie Hillman and I live in Nap. Dr. Zdowski, Board President and Nervous of the Board. Educating the children of Menominee and the surrounding district is a solemn charge. I appreciate the opportunity to hear my concerns and compliments regarding the evaluation of what progress is being made. Our well-known education certainly includes physical education, arts, music, drama, et cetera, but all education must be built on a solid foundation. The very basics are reading, writing, and arithmetic. Before a student can manage to progress in these basics, he needs to be taught character. This is not an easy task, as all young humans are born with a innate desire to kick against his authorities. In order to be in a place to learn well, children need to be instructed in certain basic character qualities. This includes such things as obey your authorities, follow the rules, be kind, share, take turns, watch out for the other guy, always tell the truth, do not steal, forgive one another, love one another, encourage one another, care enough to help the vulnerable, don't bully, but do correct in love, learn to receive constructive criticism without offense, be considerate of another person's time. Included also in character training is the understanding of moral boundaries. In a social institution like a public school, when moral standards are violated, confusion ensues. Test scores plummet. In our present culture, our professional educators have a hard job to stay the course against all manner of moral divergence. Morals are not based on feelings, but rather on truth. That is a high standard. When students display self-discipline and when truth prevails, the classroom is a healthy, happy place where learning can happen most naturally. Show me a classroom where truth is honored and character is taught, and I will show your classroom with higher academic standards. The desired report card results is truly possible. It's back to basics.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Daniel Paulson.
Good evening. I'm Daniel Paulson, N6925, 599th Street, Menominee. I'd like to address the board about community conversations. I think all boards, all school boards, particularly this school board, have had difficulty with community conversations. They have been chaotic, they have been divisive, they have been angry, they have been preaching. And it is difficult for us to deal with all of that. But we have to understand some of the history on which some people come to us. Now, there are people who believe that they have a moral obligation to impose what they feel is the correct way on our schools and our children. And they see the school as a vehicle to to indoctrinate or to indoctrinate their views upon our society and by training children to what they believe. I'll give you some history. A hundred years ago, 1920s, the KKK became a campaign cultural war warfare on behalf of white native-born Protestants against public schools. This has been documented by several scholars. Klan's soft education has a panacea to their problems with immigration, Catholics, racial segregation, rotting Victorian cultural mores, and Protestant nationalism. They contribute bibles to the schools and even demanded courses in religion. In the early 20s, Milton Lewis Ruppert, an educationist and abolitionist, began a campaign to change the curriculum of schools from Yankee orientation to a Southern orientation. And that meant that the Souths seceded because of states' rights, not slavery, and the Victorian portrayal of slavery and slavery as brutal was enacted. And this has evolved sexual education, and now gender issues have evolved. And I think that we have to recognize that people who come before us stand on the shoulders of people who have been advocating these things for over a hundred years. It's not me, but I actually like a duck. What do I like a duck? It is a duck. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Joyce Suler.
May I sit in the chair? Oh. It's really awkward. All right, Joyce Suler. Quoting excerpts from your own statement on page three in tonight's public expanded agenda quote, "The comments of the people in the school district of the Menominee area are encouraged and appreciated by the board and administrators. Education is a partnership with the schools, parents, and taxpayers, all being important participants. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the board during the community communications item listed on the agenda," unquote. Thank you for having Community Communications tonight. Maybe those statements are no longer true. Even if Community Communications is annoying, it is still important, and I hope you will cuddle into an echo chamber and lock out your constituents. In the last few years, I have done research into some problematic things in this school district that you were likely not aware of. I brought those concerns to you during Community Communications. These concerns do not easily relate to the agenda of your average meeting. Some of my findings include explicit sexual material available to students at every school, especially through your libraries and through your Sora subscription service, data mining the students through your social and emotional learning program into what are possibly permanent individual behavior files with the state, and various other issues related to SCL and CRT. During Community Communications, I read to you from a book instructing students on how to use a sex app to meet strangers near them without their parents' knowledge. You did respond at time reassuring me that the book was not available to 13-year-olds as recommended. In this school district, students must be at least 14. There didn't seem to be any interest by the board or administration into checking out what I was saying, and your silence on the matter looks like confirmation of my findings. My ability to tell you these things publicly at Community Communications makes this board somewhat accountable. Emails can be easily ignored and not made public. Thank goodness for Steve, who's not here tonight, and his videos bringing some kind of public record to what you have been told and your seeming lack of response to it. I believe that the failed referendum is an indication that many people in this community do not trust this board and this administration. They do not feel listened to by you. Withholding the small opportunities citizens have to confront you in public because it sets an unpleasant tone for the meeting is just the nail in the coffin in this relationship.
Thank you. Our final speaker tonight is Mike Cooper.
Good evening. I'll try to notice. There was a game in rumor that the school board was going to eliminate public comment portion of this board meetings. But Joyce and I, regardless, are some members of the public often comment and most of the board in lockstep acceptance of a progressive ideology of the left which infests the DPI and Department of Education. We probably tired of hearing our call for a return to parental control of their children and the repurposing of improving the fundamentals of education, such as reading, writing, and learning. For you to even consider eliminating public comment is as the Jewish people would say, pure chutzpah, which if you do not know what the word means, gall or nerve. And it leaves us weak no end that with one hand we reach in the public pocket to confiscate wealth and taxation from us from schools and with the other hand want to cover our mouth. America is the greatest democratic republic ever to exist. It exists because of the almost cherished and codified free speech. Free speech is speech to give input to direction government organizations like the district and how it should take in education, educating schools. Now, because we're tired of what concern citizens of the district are putting before you, we want to stop it. Last I checked, school board members are lovely by the public and school is supported by the public. Even if you do not agree with our previous, the least you can do is show respect for concern that we represent in sharing those views.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have revenue and expenditure reports for the month ending November 2024.
So yeah, I sent those to you via board docs. I'd like to start with the revenue report for the month ending November of 2024. You'll see on that report, there is a little over 103,000 that was from the ESTER III grant that was neither in the initial budget nor in the approved budget. So that grant officially closed on September 30th of 2024. And the initial assumptions about it, because there are unclaimed funds in that account, the initial assumptions were that they could not be utilized because there was no new expenses related to the Boys and Girls Club organization, and so that those could not be utilized because of the unclaimed expenses. However, I collaborated with a DPI official and found that the funds could be more widely applied, not just to the Boys and Girls Club expenses, but to SDMA, summer school, and after-school activities. So because of that, we have an unanticipated revenue again of a little over 103,000. Now, I did not put this in the budget revision because it's still ongoing. I'm still working on getting more from this, so I didn't want to do a budget revision until that was completed. So it should be completed for you in next month's budget revisions. I'll have a better idea of how much that would be.
That's really touching, man. That's really great news. I've never heard about that.
Thank you. So any questions on that one before I move on?
When we come back to it next month, maybe I'd be curious kind of what the reinterpretation was and what else it can be applied for. The alphabet now, but no, we can.
And I could, so it was initially thought it was just for the expenses related to the Boys and Girls Club program. It turns out it could be related virtually to a lot of after-school activities and summer school activities that happened in the past. And then, you know, just accounting for those expenses and then applying for itself.
And you all know that the board approved the Mustang Lions program at the middle school. Boys and Girls Club no longer providing services there, so that would be a perfect fit.
So next, I wanted to go over the expenses by function. And as you can see, so food service is our Fund 50 in that report. And you can see that there was a few more expenses in there than the previous year. So I reached out to Stacy Nelson, who is the food director, and she came up with three reasons about why that is. Number one, just increased meal counts, so not only higher student participation in the school lunch program, but also, of course, as we all know, that inflationary pressures have increased food costs and also that increased those expenses. Also, number two, repairs, not only in refrigeration equipment, but also kitchen equipment. Repairs have been a problem that's higher than usual this year than in previous years. And then finally, wages. She says staffing levels are higher due to more filled positions and of course, increases in wage expenditures on a year-to-year basis also contributes to that. So I still have to, so Stacy and I will plan to meet and kind of go over these, make sure, you know, compare notes and make sure we're on the same page and maybe consider adjustments before the year end. But those three reasons for the reasons for those increased expenses. And then also on that is library media was up a tad if you include the encumbered amount. So this is 222 library media. If you include the encumbered amount, it was up about 9%, which I thought was interesting because, and if you look at the next report by objects, library media books is actually down a few, actually quite substantially. And after digging into it, it appears that there's more money being spent, not in traditional library books or some of those more traditional library expenses, but in more of a shift towards software and website subscriptions that reflect a shift in resource priorities and things like that. Is there any questions of those two expense reports?
With respect to the food service expenses, excuse me. If some of that, you know, you just mentioned one of the reasons is like an increase in meal count. Do you expect it, Stacy expect down the line to also see like an increase, a little bit of an increased revenue tick there?
Yeah, that would certainly accompany, depending on who those students are, that would certainly accompany probably an increase also on revenue.
Okay, okay. And then, yeah, I guess otherwise, whether you're looking at potentially a budget revision or a budget change to have another revision if, you know, if you're already at 55% of our way through the school year, this is the fiscal year.
Perhaps.
Okay.
Is Fund 50 directly has to be self-filled pretty quickly?
Yeah, otherwise Fund 10 would supplement it, but accountable is always to have it be self-sufficient.
It just can't go out into Fund 10, but Fund 10 can.
Correct, correct. I mean, yeah, that's all I had with this question.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. Sorry, I was just looking at the last report too, just to make sure I have any other. Appreciate that. Any other questions for Eric? Dom, you want to make sure you have a chance to chime in if you have any questions?
Thank you. I think it's good so far.
Okay, great. All right, next up, we have the monthly employment report for November 2024. It was an informational report.
I would like to point out, it's kind of along the lines that Eric just talked about. Sam White and her HR team, a lot of the building principals and department directors have been doing a great job with hiring and we are seeing that in the budget of food service. It's not that we added staff, I mean, the staffing plan did not change. However, in previous years, we had too many positions that remained vacant. And whether it's, you know, seeing trends within the economy or whether it's great work by our staff, we are seeing more success in filling vacant positions. So there is a budget impact, but we're also seeing a service impact, which we're very happy about.
Any questions on the monthly employment report? Seeing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda. Second, Amber. Motion by eight, second by Amber. Tonight, we have minutes from the regular board meeting of November 11th, 2024. Financial reports, general unchecks of the amount of $2,224,576.72 in cash receipts in the amount of $106,91.4. We have two donations exceeding $1,000 for the month of November, including $15,000 from the Menominee Area Booster Club, thank you, boosters, and $1,700 from the Peter Marsh Foundation to the middle school music program. We are also asked to approve an MHS orchestra out-of-state travel to the Dorian Orchestra Festival at Luther College, Music Park, Iowa. Any questions about the consent agenda or discussion? All right, seeing none, let's vote. Dom, are you able to vote in board docs?
Yes, we just talked about.
And motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have the personnel consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda.
So move to you.
Second. Motion by Amy, second by, I heard Amy first. Uh, sorry. I'll just tap the next. Okay, tonight all we have is a retirement of another one-time teacher. Anything you want to say about this?
Yes, Kim Winchester, after being in the district for about 20 years as a teacher for students with visual impairments and orientation mobility specialist, will be retired at the end of the school year. We certainly will miss Kim Kimberly and appreciate all of her years of service. We also know that there's going to be huge shoes to fill. And I know Tonya and I and Sam, we've already been talking about this. This is really a cause for concern, but we really appreciate Kimberly letting us help early and that'll give us a better chance to try to build her position.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And motion passes unanimously. All right, on to the action agenda. Our first item tonight is an action to approve the 2025-26 district calendar. I'll entertain a motion. All right, motion by Dale, second by Angie to approve the calendar. So we have the new, the updated calendar and also, as you'll notice in board docs, a document with suggestions that basically came out of QIC meeting and from teachers. Couple small changes from what we looked at last time. Do you want to lead us through that?
I'd be happy to. And again, I want to thank everyone who had a hand in developing this calendar from the building level up to the district directors and then also the school board members that provided input at the last meeting. We did have a QIC meeting the first Monday of December and based on the feedback that we received from that meeting, there have been a few adjustments to the original calendar that the board reviewed last time. First of all, the professional development day in February was moved to April, which will be the day after Easter. Our teachers and staff felt like that was more convenient for families, not only families of our employees, but also families that have children going to work school. So I think that was a good change. We have a slight concern with it, now having back-to-back months of professional development, but we think that the flexibility for families is worth it. But we think that the flexibility for families is worth it. Parent-teacher conferences at the middle school were moved to be on the same, both days in the same week. That have the PC days, the parent-teacher credit days. This year, they were kind of split up with a PC date in the middle. And it was felt by that staff that it would be better this way. They are going to have one of the nights on Monday to ensure that families who have children in multiple schools will have the opportunity to go to two different schools. I know that was a concern, why they were separated in the first place. We think this still meets that concern. Probably one of the most significant concerns we received was from hourly staff represented on the QIC. And when we have the longer breaks, and you can see this calendar has a long break over Thanksgiving and over winter break, that really has a major impact on the paychecks for hourly employees. And just the way the rules and regulations are and how those employees need to be paid, there are some real limiting factors for what we can do. But what we came up with, and this was an idea that came from our hourly employees, was moving the, some of the paid holidays, for instance, Labor Day and Memorial Day. And instead of having those paid holidays take place then, have those paid holidays take place over those breaks. And that will help spread it out a little bit more. And we think, you know, Sam talked to people in the business office and the payroll department, and we think that that is a reasonable fix. What we've already done is we take a look at the deductions that are taken from paychecks. And there's always a couple of paychecks where deductions don't need to be taken, based on how they're spread throughout the year. And we already align those paychecks, those lowest paychecks, with those deductions being deferred. So between the holidays and deferred deductions, we think that'll help soften the blow. And then lastly, there was comment about additional study and investigation regarding what high school's graduation date. It has been held a Sunday Memorial Day weekend for many years. There are so many different activities, and we try to have graduation at a time where all of our students and families can attend. Some districts are doing that in the evening, kind of last week of May or around that time. I still think additional study needs to take place. So right now, we continue to have graduation scheduled for that Sunday here Memorial Day weekend. However, Mr. Drake and his team will continue to investigate that. If there is going to be any change recommended for graduation, we will bring that to the board prior to the start of next school year. But right now, we kind of have it the same date as it has been.
And just about five years ago, you're talking about the graduation of 2026.
Correct, yes, yes. This year's graduation. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I just want to say, since I was in my QIC meeting last week, I think the discussion about the pay over the long holiday weeks was very robust. And, you know, one of our tasks this year is to focus on communication overall. And I think that the whole QIC group, especially Joe and Sam, did a great job of kind of trying to figure out what would work across the board. Really listening to different ideas from all the teachers and staff who are present. And trying to figure out how can we make this work for everyone. I think they did a really good job. I think the discussion there was very robust. So I'm sure I can use this as a board member, this discussion of ideas being brought forward and how to solve a problem and really being heard out and discussed in the moment, that was great.
Thanks, Adrian.
Yeah, I just also want to echo that I was glad to see that, like, the creativity and possibility, I really appreciate the effort on that. Any other questions or discussion on the calendar? Seeing none, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our action agenda is an action to approve the new high school course, Mustang Messenger. And we got an update, this was included in the high school course update that we saw at our November meeting. Was that just November? It's still longer than that. And this, there was a number of things we looked at on the post-laborary member, and this was the only one that required a, or both, as far as I'm aware. Brian, or Joe, you want to say anything about this?
Brian, there's been no changes, correct. This is exactly what the board looked at in November.
Anyone have questions or discussion about this proposed new class? All right.
Oh, did we make a motion to?
Uh, thank you. We did not make a motion. I should have started at the beginning. I'll entertain a motion to approve the high school course.
Don't move.
All right, well, she played out her knee, and second by Dale, and my apologies. Are you ready to vote?
Just before the vote, I just want to say that we're really excited for having this opportunity for more writing from our students, the opportunity to publish their writing. And I think this is a really good addition to our curriculum and instruction at Menominee High School. Brian, anything else?
Yeah, would you want to say something?
I was gonna say the same, it's just that you can even have a practical type of use of your writing. You know, it really makes it very special. I think it's a great idea.
Absolutely agree. Glad we had a chance to talk about it last time and appreciate the work that's gone into creating it. All right, let's vote. And motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have an action to approve a change to policy 343.46, our early college credit program. And before anything else, I'll entertain a motion.
So move to you.
Amy, second. Amy, and just as a reminder, folks, we're approving the changes to policy 343.46. And there's an additional rule, 343.45, that is essentially the same language that doesn't require or approval, but we'll see it in the background materials tonight. Do you want to say something about this?
Sure, the board did review this in November and offered some suggestions. The basic principle was discussed in November is the exact same. And really what it comes down to is defining what good academic standing is in order for students to be able to participate in these programs. Nothing with the actual provisions changed. It really was just more wording and how it's organized in the policy. But we do think this is appropriate and we think it's relevant to have good standing and be well-aligned with the school district report cards. Brian, was there anything else that you wanted to mention?
No, I guess the only thing that I would add is we had an opportunity after that meeting to go back at high school level, look at the updated language. And the main call for bringing this forward, like we talked about last time, was to ensure that there is adequate time for communication with students and families about this. And approving this this evening allows for that to be within those time limits.
Mr. Drake, from a high school perspective, was there anything else that you wanted to add?
Nope, nope, that's it.
Very good. Thanks for your work on this.
Any questions or discussion on this policy change? Seeing none, let's vote. And motion passes unanimously. All right, next, we have strategic planning in the district, and I think we have a special desk here tonight.
Yes, I'm happy to introduce to you Joanne Sterkey. Joanne comes to us from Excel Leadership. You may recall, Joanne worked with us, was it six years ago now? And with the creation of our previous strategic plan, Joanne had been superintendent to the Puywaukees School District. She's been well-decorated with about every award a school administrator can be decorated with. And in her retirement from school administration, probably busier now than once you were. We're so happy to have you tonight, Joanne. Go ahead and take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, board members and Dr. Zdowski. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight, and I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. And I'd also like to thank you for your decision to serve your schools and your community. Strategic planning is an important, important opportunity for the district to set forth its priorities. And I can't be more thrilled to represent Excel Leader and do that as we move forward. I know Jenny's working to advance the slides, however we do that. You can go to the next one. In the brief time I have with you tonight, I've certainly not been able to walk through the proposal. I want to make sure that you understand that we're very grateful for this opportunity. I'd like to discuss with you the why of a strategic plan very briefly, but I'd like to really spend some time reviewing the phases of the process and then answer any questions that you may have. Next slide. I'm not going to spend too much time introducing myself. I had the pleasure of working on this plan six years ago when I was with Studer Education. I'm now working with my colleague, next slide, Brian Cambers, who I've worked with in the Puywaukees School District. And Brian and I are facilitating plans in the state of Wisconsin. And I love doing this work. I've been doing it for about 25 years and really enjoy what a strategic plan can catalyze for a school district. And I know that you have done that with yours, and I'm very happy to be refreshing it. So as we begin, when I think about what the refresh will do, I think you want to think about really taking it from aspirations to reality, that this is the blueprint, this is the do list, this is what we're going to be focusing on, number one. Secondly, I think one of the great opportunities that you have, particularly with communication being a priority, is obtaining community voice in this plan. Then it's a shared plan. It's not your plan, it's not Dr. Zdowski's plan, it's the community's plan for the school. And so in light of that, we will offer three opportunities that I will talk with you about in terms of attaining community voice. We will have, I would call, super-participants taking part in the strategic planning committee. Those community members and staff members that want to have an additional voice in that process. We will also have a strategic plan survey, a very easy opportunity for any citizen to take part in, as well as listening sessions. We'll be doing 18 listening sessions. And so that we'll have the opportunity to attain voice that way. And I'm a big believer that the strategic plan needs to represent the views of the community. And so we've really grounded in making sure that we do that. But the whole reason you do this is so that, number three, you have a focus and a prioritization. If you try to do everything, you don't get anything done. So it's really trying to say, we got a lot done in the last five years. What are the next steps and what will we look to do in the next five years in the school district of the Menominee area? And with any strategic plan, you don't want it to sit on the shelf. You're making a tremendous investment. So you want to have clarity around the commitments and goals you're making, as well as an accountability system that allows you to feel comfortable as board members that work is getting done and that it is having impact. And so with that, I just have a question for you, and again, not every board member needs to participate, but can you go back one? What is your current, when you think of the current strategic plan, just a couple of board members, what do you believe that has done? And I'm not looking for specifics of we did this or did this, but why was that a good venture for the district and what are you yielding because of it? Oh, we are all looking.
Well, I think there was a lot, I'm kind of out of the spot here, so.
Okay, you say paths, don't make it, don't make it bully. Oh, and I'm not looking for specifics.
He's getting me bad. I got my eyes out to him too, so we have this little, you know, relationship that goes back and forth. But I think that just the idea of having our community involved, I think, is really important in our teachers and so forth. And that there was a lot of opportunity for people to come forward, and I think that's going to happen again, from what you're telling me. Let's see, I know that we've, I don't, I can't really think of anything specific to say other than that I think it's done some good work. Maybe somebody else can help me out. Amy?
I'm like, time to the board, I've been really impressed with the career education from pillar one. I think you know our work with CDT C and QW Stout and the STEM programs program that our girls have taken on. I've also noticed a real commitment to pillar two with that part of our students' wellness. And I've also been very impressed with our facility operations work, and those three especially stick out to me.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to say, I really think that the framework is strong. And, you know, we on a quarterly basis look at our progress toward our annual work plan. And I think what we have in our strategic plan and in those pillars gives us a very strong basis for building that work plan and for evaluating what's happening toward our work plan. Like, I think as a board member, this strategic plan really helps me understand why we're doing what we're doing and how we're moving toward those goals. So I think, hold up.
Good work done by the district. Let's move on to the next slide. So here is the strategic plan from 2019 to 2024. And we will first do a gap analysis to make sure that these pillars will stand the test of time. We always like to, when we're doing our focus groups, make sure that there isn't a blind spot that would ask for a change in some sort. But I'm fairly confident that, I'm fairly confident that the pillars will remain with potentially one, you know, one or two minor changes at best. We're not taking this back to the vision, mission, and values that will stand. So happy you said them at the beginning, the vision, and it just speaks volumes when we do that. So moving to the next slide, our work will really occur in this part right here. Just keep clicking, Jenny. We'll refresh the pillars and make sure that they are correct. We'll look at the strategic objective areas and the commitments, and then we'll begin to develop some goals so that that will then suffice that you will have a plan from 2025 to 2030. And doesn't that seem like a long way away? So that's where we're going in terms of structure. I'd like to use the rest of my time before asking you for questions on the next slide regarding the process that we will utilize. With Dr. Zdowski's good work, we are in phase one and things are moving very, very smoothly. I'm very, very pleased, Joe, thank you very much. Information is on the website right now. Invitations are being created for the listening sessions. We'll be doing nine with different families in early January. We'll be doing two with community members and business leaders in February. And we'll be meeting with staff in both January and February for listening sessions. And really, the opportunity for that is to give people that voice that we want. The other thing that Brian Cambers and I will do is we will take a look at our key data and do an environmental scan so that we have a good handle on what are the priorities that the data is saying we should be looking at. The bulk of the work that we do listening will occur in January and February. We will hold those 18 listening sessions onsite at various locations. We will also follow up with a validation survey. So we will identify the key themes identified by pillar as well as overall in the listening sessions. And then we will vet those and ask any citizen who didn't take part in the listening session. These were identified as key areas for the upcoming plan. Do you concur? Do you have anything to add? And then that gives another voice in the process. And then that strategic planning committee will begin meeting in February, and their work will continue into phase three from February till June, when they are working with those key themes to generate those pillars, goals, and strategic objectives. So we go from, if you think of it, a big funnel, lots of input by a survey, lots of input from strategic plan listening sessions to the work of a strategic plan committee comprised of staff, families. And like, and I know Angela, you'll be serving as a liaison, I believe, thank you.
Amber.
Amber, I'm sorry, Amber. Thank you for your service, and we'll talk more about how you want to take part in that. But our funnel then will be taking it down to the plan that we'll be bringing to the board in the beginning of July, and then hopefully you will adopt, and then you will set forth with the next five-year plan after that. I know that I ran rather quickly through this, but I am ready to answer any questions you have. And I'm eager to make sure that you have a sense of confidence that the process will move forward smoothly. So I'll take any questions that you have.
I have one question about the listening sessions. And I think I missed this in reading through the materials. So you are intending to have, did you say two listening sessions that would be community member-focused as opposed to sort of parent and family-focused?
Yes, we're doing two community and business leader. Yes, we're doing two community and business leader sessions. And we'll do one in the morning and one in the early evening.
And are those, are those on schedule yet? Is that why I don't think I see them on that letter, but?
They'll be, I think that's a special invitation.
Okay.
And then we'll get that out, and that will be in mid-February.
Okay, oh, no, sorry, I do see it up here, I'm sorry. That's great, that was one thing I was going to ask about, I think it is a great idea. Now I see that I intended to be held here. You know, we did a lot of community outreach ahead of our referendum earlier in the year. One thing I heard from some people would be that there are folks who would not like to come into a school building, maybe necessarily. And I wonder about, like, looking for places to host a meeting somewhere more, maybe more neutral, I guess, if that's a possibility.
I was talking to Dr. Zdowski, we'd be happy to do that. I mean, we're here, we can certainly do that. And I actually think last time we did one at UW Stout, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of things. And then the, there's a, at the end of this document, there is a list of local leaders, business leaders, community partners, organizational leaders to reach out to. Is that something that we can add more to?
Yes, and I just drafted that out, I'm looking for one.
Okay, great.
Feedback on that. We want to be much wider and closer than what we have so far.
Great, I assume that this was the first brainstorm draft and that we were welcome to add to it, so.
Sure.
And so all of our members, please take a look at that and think of folks you'd like to add to it. Bye, honey.
Yeah, I have some thoughts on that, which I'll later come back to. But one thing I've been curious about looking to use is, you know, obviously, like, as a board, we're very kind of board focused, how does it work with the community? We've been trying in different methods of outreach, we've been discussing alternate ways of doing public comment and so on. And I think the board's goal is done to kind of get, to really try to get more community voices that we hear by expanding actually all the different community. One thing I'm very curious about in the context of strategic planning is to what extent the board, like, board outreach, board listening sessions would conflict with or confuse or hit in the way of the kind of, the fast movement process that you're running? Because I want, you know, our, along with the slow efforts to get in the way of the very important work that's been going through strategic planning, and really is adjacent to the board but is not a board process in particular. So how do you see, like, which events should the board be present at and notable at and participating in? And which ones should be standard items that way people can pop?
Thank you, that's a really good question, and I appreciate your sensitivity about wanting to be a part and also wanting to respect that you don't want to overwhelm the citizen participation part of that. I would certainly encourage board members to have a presence at the listening sessions to welcome people. I know that that might be a commitment, but if everyone would take one or two, we certainly would have that opportunity and we could script what you're saying. But I think it's a nice opportunity for you as a board member to say, we value your input, this is an important process, and please give us your thoughts. I would say, however, that after that, I would not be speaking and dominating the agenda of those meetings because you truly want that to be the citizens' time to move forward and know that we will come to you with those key themes afterwards, so that you will get that. The other thing I respond to with that question is, we try and really make sure that we tell people that this is not about an operational concern that they're working. This is something that takes five years of work, you know? And so these are the big hitting items that the plan should focus on, not a hole in the parking lot or a door that sticks. And so we try to really make sure that we are doing that and focusing those around the strengths and opportunities, next steps. I would say, however, that I would always give Dr. Zdowski a list of, hey, this came up, and I'm just giving you a heads up, so that you know that this came up and it certainly was something we addressed and said, I don't think that's something for the strategic plan, but we'll be certain to pass that on.
And basically, if we hear, you know, we often came with all sorts of people within the community about all sorts of topics related to the school. Many of them we direct to Dr. Zdowski, it is appropriate, some of them we just kind of listen to and say, you know, thanks, that's interesting. How would you, is there a useful mechanism for us to, you know, send to you, say, I've heard this, I know that I came up with a strategic plan and you should know about it, as something came up? Or should we take that person and say, you should go to this meeting and present it yourself?
Quite frankly, I think it's the latter. I think as much as it would be easy, think of the work that you would be taking on if you were the conduit. I think it would be much better to say, with pride, we've set up numerous opportunities for citizen input. If you are unable to have an evening out or a morning out, you've got an opportunity with a survey. But please, attend a listening session, your voice is important. But I would say, I would, as much as you can direct people to take part, it's a nice, it's a nice opportunity, and it's about a 90-minute commitment at best. And it's a great opportunity for people to have their voice heard. And also with a neutral third party, that I think makes it a little bit safer as well for people.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the good questions.
With regard to this survey, will the board see a draft or a sample of what that would look like? And also, I guess, broader question, will that, will that be sort of open-ended questions? Will it be multiple choice, what's the format of the survey?
I can show you a sample, but it will be dependent on what key themes are identified from the listening sessions. But it will be a confirming question, these were the three key strengths that citizens raised. Are you in agreement that these would be three that you would say are strengths? Similarly, next steps, what next steps would you add? And that would be open-ended. So it's a combination of both, a confirming of what the listeners have concealed and then an opportunity to add to.
And then in terms of those open questions, that's something that I assume you'll be helping to synthesize, what we can take from this, but will the board have the opportunity to review everything that comes in there?
I will be giving both the committee and the board and Dr. Zdowski copies of the key themes that we've identified, not the raw data, it would just be too much. But I will definitely be giving, Brian and I will be giving the key themes.
But what about sort of the comments that come via the survey?
Yeah, I think that that would be workable. I think it's something I always caution, you know, around getting in the weeds on that, but I can understand your desire to want to see it, so I think we can certainly make that work.
Okay.
God, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
We're eager to get it going, and I'm very, very grateful to Dr. Zdowski for all the work that he's done thus far to get this going. And thank you, board members, it's been a pleasure to be with you. I just, I think.
Yeah, I probably should know the answer to this, but what's the makeup of the committee and how is that structured?
We try to have around, I would say, 13 to 15 people, variety of any administrators, staff, community members. We've put forth an opportunity for people to apply to be on it. I'm hopeful that we'll have enough that we can do that by February, and then the district will make some selections.
Any other questions or discussion on this? Thank you so much for being here tonight, and I'm really excited to get started.
Me too, thank you so much.
Thanks for jumping right in.
Thank you so very much.
You can just leave that there, John, thank you. Safe travels.
Thank you much.
All right, our next discussion item tonight is state accountability report cards. We've got Brian here to lead us through that.
Yeah, before Brian takes over, I would just like to tell Brian and everyone that I really appreciate the work that has gone into this, not only all the work by our teachers and staff members and students in the classroom and in the school building, but also the administrative team for their leadership in terms of evaluating the results, identifying areas for improvement, and then also, you know, already taking steps towards that improvement. With that being said, I know board members, you know, some of you have spent a lot of time going through all the details. Brian's going to give kind of a higher level overview tonight, and then certainly we can take additional questions at that point, but Brian, go ahead.
So thank you for that introduction, Joe. And so, school report cards, just a real quick introduction to what this report is and how it differs from the achievement report that we presented a couple of months ago related to last spring's state assessment. So school report cards, it's important to note that it is made up of four primary areas that take a look at student achievement, student academic growth between years, an area that's referred to as target group outcomes, which is where we take a look at essentially the lowest quartile of students from academic standpoint, both achievement and growth, as well as absenteeism in graduation, and take a look at how that quartile does. And then a category that's referred to as on-track graduation. There are several factors that go into that. The way this differs from a standard state achievement report is it takes a look at not only the most recent school year, so the 23, 24 school year's achievement data, but it also will pull data from the two prior years as well. So there's not a one-to-one correlation to how many kids took a state assessment last spring, because this information comes from three years worth of state assessment. And it spans all of the state assessment grades. So in our district, that is rated three through 11. And then there are some areas that do pull only one year's worth of data, and that has to do with attendance rate and graduation rate. And the important thing with that to note is that that data lags everything else by one year. So it's not last school year's attendance and graduation, it's prior year's school attendance and graduation. And that's because there's a date that they refer to as a December snapshot date. It actually was last Friday, and that's when all that data is finalized from prior year. So just kind of that background. As we get going here this evening, in addition to the information that was provided in your background, I think it's important that I share, you know, that snapshot of our district. So with the school report cards, each building receives its report card, and the district as a whole receives a report card. So we can take a look at the district as a whole, on all of those grades and all of those state assessments and all of that information pulled together. But then each building receives its report card in isolation if it goes along with that. So our district, a little snapshot of our district, based off of this report card data, we are 17.1% students with disabilities. We are 42.6% economically disadvantaged, and we're 4.7% English learners that make up our district. And then there are areas where it will break down further into other demographic groups. So to start off with, what I'm happy to report is, again, for this year's report, our district meets expectations, and we're very solidly in that meets expectations category. We're not on a bubble or on a threshold, we're close bouncing in one or the other. We're very solidly in that area. The way that report cards are set up, based off of your economically disadvantaged number in your district, it will determine how much weight is given to academic achievement, just straight achievement, how many students fit a established benchmark or above that, and then what percentage is based off of academic growth from one year to the next, and then over those three years. Because of our economically disadvantaged category, the 50% that is based on student achievement and growth, 30.7% of that overall report card score is usually based on academic growth. And that's important, we'll get into a little bit later in the discussion here this evening, to note that more of our report card is based on growth from one year to the next than it is on academic achievement, right? So I think that's an important piece. So when we take a look at our district as a whole, like I said, we need expectations. In the district, we have three buildings that exceed expectations. So there's that next category. Dunsville Elementary moved up one category from last year to this year. They moved into the exceeds expectations from the needs expectation. Napa Elementary exceeded expectation, as did Oklahoan Elementary. So we're very excited, you know, that those three buildings exceed expectations while on that category, there's a lot of work goes into getting into that category. River Heights, Wakanda, and our middle school fall into meets expectations category. And when you take a look at from one year to the next, there'll be some movement in numbers and some others, you know, will have, will have some movement. Both River Heights and Wakanda last year were in the exceeds expectations category, and they slid into the meets expectation category. And we've had movement from year to year in our buildings when we have that. Monominee High School falls into the category of meets fewer expectations, which is that category is below meets expectations. It's the second year in a row that the high school is in that category. Last year, after learning and determining that the high school fell into that category, a lot of work took place last school year to identify some of the root causes behind that, why that was, the staff at the high school and teams present there spent a lot of time not only looking at their own process and looking at their own opportunities that students have, but one of the things that we do is we take a look at what are some similar demographic districts, some similar demographic high schools in this case? And we look for ones that had scores of meets expectations and a handful that were in the exceeds expectations, there weren't very many, but there were a few. And then we did some outreach to those districts to try and learn a little bit more from them. And then many of those lessons that we learned and then just the work that the team at the high school spent time last year on were things that were implemented for this school year. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we move forward through this. And that's not to say that that process only happens at the high school. That process regardless of how a building does or how the district does, we do a similar process. We want to learn from other districts, we want to learn from other schools, and incorporate some of that into our continuous improvement process. Now, all that being said, a couple of things that I want to point out related to some supplemental pieces that are part of our state report card that used to not be, but the last couple of years have been yet, and I think that you were really nice job of helping to tell that whole child experience and embracing balance to the report cards, it's not just about academic achievement. So when we take a look at our district and specifically at the high school, some things that we noted with this year's report card or the last year's report card is that we're seeing a larger percentage of students at the high school that are enrolling in courses that allow them to earn more secondary credit, so our dual enrollment, dual credit opportunities. Not only do we see an increase, but an increase in relation to the state. So our students have taken more dual credit courses than the report cards across the state. It includes the transcripted courses that our high school staff are teaching, as well as classes that our students may be taking at CDT C or UW Stout. So they'll be referencing some of those partnerships, you know, that we've noticed with the strategic plan that's showing up in our, in our school report card as well. Some other pieces that we're seeing, we're seeing a larger percentage of high school students participating in workforce and learning experiences, things like co-op and youth friendship programs or internship program. And those students allow students to earn not only their high school credit, but they also gain industry experience and in many cases, an industry recognition at the school. So a couple of things to point out. And then we saw a larger percentage of students also enrolling in music courses at the high school all the way across. So a couple of things to point out when we go through there. So as we, as we go forward, you know, what do we do with this information? So we start to take a look and see that historically, we're starting to see some gains with our overall student achievement levels in our district. What we're starting to see is the growth from one year to the next isn't quite what we're used to see. So that's a piece that we're digging into. That's a piece that when we do report cards, when we look at the idea of how much academic growth do we expect a student to make within a period of one academic year? What we're noticing is, in some of our buildings, we're continuing to do a really good job with that. Our, two of our elementary schools, Dunsville and Mapp, for example, exceed that expected level of growth in both ELA and Mapp with all demographic groups that are present within those two smaller buildings, which is, which is a very big accomplishment. Now, it's a pretty small group, but it's still a pretty big accomplishment there. We see something similar at Wakanda with English Language Arts, where all demographic groups are making more than a year's expected growth in that area. And then at the middle school, for example, in the area of Mapp, all of our demographic groups are showing more than a year's expected growth. So we're spending some time looking at what that is and where that can go. And one of the questions that a lot of times will come up is, so we know this, not a lot. And one of the questions that a lot of times will come up is, so we know this now a lot. So included in the background were several items that we've identified as far as the next steps, where we're going to continue working with the high school with the updates that they've decided to make, or recommended to make, and, you know, through some of the course review process, you know, some of that will go into that next school year. We'll probably start to see many of the things that they were working on this year to start to add to it in that. Student attendance is one of those areas, as we start to take a look at what attendance two years ago to attendance last year, we're seeing some gains there already, so we expect to see more attendance not only in the high school, but throughout the district, more available on next year's report card. When we take a look at our academic growth at the elementary level, our staff have been working very hard with implementing not only the requirements of Wisconsin Act Twenty, which is the early literacy requirements for K three, but several years ago, we identified we needed to make some updates with our ELA resources. So we're in year two, in year three, implementing those changes. Similar situation at our middle school with the area of ELA as well. So some of those things will build as, as our students age forward, but then also taking a look at what are some of the pieces that can be done, not only during this school year, but as we plan for next school year. High school, for example, knowing that growth between assessments is something that is lagging this fall, they implemented the pre-asci tea assessment. Mr. Drake and his team have done a really good job of meeting with departments, taking a look at that initial information, how that aligns with our course sequences, and having some conversations about how can they more actively represent some of the questioning strategies and type of content that students will see. That's one of those things that, you know, from an instructional standpoint is, is good, but then also will help students be more prepared for that assessment as well. The, the change in some of the policy as far as defining what good academic standing is, that came over some of that work as well. So again, high level overview here this evening, but, you know, as, as board members who have already met with me on this show, I've talked a very long time on this topic, but I'm going to sit back and see the questions that happen.
Before we get to the questions, I would just like to interpret three really mean things here. One, this is a snapshot, and while it's a very important snapshot, it is a snapshot, and I really do appreciate the work of our students and staff, our faculty, our teachers. Certainly, we would like to have perfect scores across the board, but we also understand that there's a lot of outside factors that play into this, and I think people are working very hard. I also want to point out that it's continuous work. We would be here with suggested changes, and we'd be bringing forward new ideas, even if our scores were perfect. This is continuous, it's, it's never, it's never going to be done, it's something we need to continue to work on. And then lastly, high goals. We have, definitely have some demographics that make it more difficult. If you look across the state, even though these report cards are much better than looking at raw achievement, if you still look across the state at demographics, especially when you talk about economic demographics, you can almost see a map of the report card scores based on economic demographics. It's not perfect, but there definitely is an influence there. That's not an excuse. We still have high standards, our goal still is to exceed expectations at every school, and we'll continue to work on it even once we reach that spot.
I have one real quick question about the weighting of the scores. You mentioned, well, now I see that it was the pie chart on the main one, so you mentioned that due to our demographics, that growth has weighted over achievement, is that true for every building? And like, is every building in the district weighted the same way as the district as a whole?
It's a great question, and the short answer is no. Because that weighting factor is unique to each building. And legislatively, the percentage was set at thirty-five. So if your economically disadvantaged population is thirty-five percent of your student population, the top half of your pie, fifty percent is on, fifty percent of that, that, that top half or a quarter of the overall, will be on achievement, and a quarter of the overall score will be on growth, and then a quarter is on the post-secondary readiness, and a quarter is on target groups. The further away from thirty-five percent pre-reduce, the more or less that's weighted on achievement or growth. So what I will say is, when you take a look at our district as a whole, yes, more emphasis is placed on growth, but it won't be the exact same percentage building by building. So if we look at Oklaho compared to Wakanda compared to River Heights, all three of those seem similarly sized buildings will have different weightings. And then our smaller buildings, our smaller buildings in Napa and Downsville, for the current year, actually only have three categories, because there aren't enough students to generate the target groups. So there's, there are report cards that are on three instead of four categories, so then that really changes the way that that, that pie chart looks.
Interesting. Questions for Brian and Dominique, be sure to shout if you want us.
So let's talk a little bit about attendance. Yeah, to me, that's the really strange thing about high school, when there's lots of, you know, different kinds of groups, different performance of different activities, and so on the theme base strikes me as a number that's, that's higher than the autonomy and higher than the state, is the chronic absentee, which first of all, you know, remind us what that number actually means in terms of days, but secondly, I guess, you know, it's how can we directly impact over time how we really improve attendance at high school level? Because students are older, they have more autonomy, you know, making it an attractive place to be, making it a place that they want to be and that they want to learn at, so it's awesome that.
So to start out with, for the purpose of report cards and state assessments, to be chronically absent is to miss ten percent or more of the scheduled days. That's what I think it is. Ten percent. So it comes out to just under eighteen scheduled days. Now, there is another, another requirement that if, you know, that a parent can excuse their child for ten or more days for whatever reason they feel is necessary, but to be chronically absent is you missing ten percent or more of the scheduled days. So.
For any reason.
For any reason. And for the purpose of report cards, an absence is an absence is an absence. So a doctor's excuse, while it's excused, is still an absence. A vacation, while maybe excused, is still an absence. And then if a student is thrown from school, that is also an absence. So when you, when you sit there and you say, okay, so it's, it's, you know, seventeen point something days that a student will miss, you know, if you go through and do the math, if a student misses two, two scheduled days of school each month of school, they are chronically absent. So how do you, how do you address that? One piece is an awareness of that. And I, I will give the high school staff a lot of credit, they have spent a lot of time digging into just attendance in general, whether it's chronic absenteeism or absenteeism, you know, in and of itself. You know, and one of the things that we have done over the last several years is review our coding of absences, because one of the things that we've identified just why is there were some improvements that could be made in the last two years, that's what we're confident that we made those. But when it gets to a report card standpoint, it does not matter what the absence is or how it's coded, and absence is an absence when it comes to that category.
Brian, so to give us a specific example, driver's education. So almost every student in our school district takes driver's education when they're in high school. And almost every student needs to miss some school to get behind the wheel and drive with an instructor. Now, that used to be a school-based program, it no longer is. The way that that had been being coded, actually, all those absences were being counted towards absences in those report cards. That was a simple coding change that actually not counting as the kid's school report card because they are taking driver's time. So there's things like that, and then when you talk about the attendance lagging, you know, these changes, we may make them while attendance, we're talking two years ago. So it is going to take some time for some of these changes to be reflected in the report card, however, I don't want to make it seem like we're explaining away these results, there is a concern about the mom's school that too many of our students miss.
In particular, I think in the, I was trying to find the chart as I was scrolling through all the, all the listings. It seems to me that like, the other thing that I think is challenging about these numbers is that the chronic absenteeism is particularly high among the, among the economically disadvantaged group. So I'm looking at page seven of the high school report, and, you know, like, that's a, that's, this seems to be a shockingly high number, to be honest. And so, you know, are there, we don't, I don't think we have this chart have the statewide data on that critical disadvantage, so it's hard to know that comparison, but, you know, if there are, are family difficulties, job difficulties, accessibility difficulties for students even getting to school, we know that, you know, families facing genial situations with a harder, harder time kind of making schedules happen, right? So I wonder if that's a fact, we don't have comparative data in this data, so maybe you do, but, yeah, to me, that, my belief is, I think our teachers are doing a great job in everything they've done over the last few years, I think that we have excellent staff, we have excellent program, excellent program. If the students aren't in the classroom, it's all for nothing, so.
I agree. You know, it's, it's, it's hard to demonstrate that growth if we're not present to demonstrate the academic growth. I will, I will say that the commitment that staff and buildings have made on relationship building is one of the contributing factors to improving our attendance over the years, because students who feel they have a connection are more likely to come to school, because they know they have that, that connection, and somebody's going to know it, so they're not there. And we can't undervalue that, because once we get them there, I have no, no doubt that, you know, we, we can, we can help them demonstrate academic growth in that context.
That's an excellent point, yeah, that relationship building, and, you know, this is data from your process that you have to present, but, but yeah, and now we have several years, a few years of data now, you know, on the students having a trusted, a trusted adult in the building, and we have information on participation and activities, and, you know, how much those things bring, bring students into, into the school and make them feel like they're part of the community.
And Mr. Drake can also speak to this, but just a couple of the other initiatives that the high school has put in place this year, which they would not be reflected in this year's results, about a couple of things that I'm really, you know, interested to see the impact. One would be the cell phone use, and we've seen research, we've seen anecdotes of, you know, so many kids being distracted during school, and I think what Mr. Drake and his team have done at the high school this year to really restrict that cell phone use during class time, I think will pay dividends. The other piece was actually brought up by our student council reps today, and I, I feel bad because it is a balance, we're trying to promote, you know, a fun and enjoyable environment, at the same time, we look at the study hall period, and while we have some people doing a really good job of that study hall period, students and staff taking great advantage of it, we have the perfect mechanism to have adults work with kids and ensure that they are getting their work done and that they are getting the help that they need. You know, it's really a special schedule that we have there that rules for that, and I really don't think we have been taking good advantage. So there hasn't been a change in philosophy, also a change in behavior, and I know Mr. Drake continues to work on that with his staff. The most recent piece is now that we're through the first grading period, a list of students who need additional support has been generated, and our teachers that have those students in that study hall period have been tasked with providing that support. You know, so it's, it's a more directed approach, and I, I do think we're going to see that pay dividends when we look at next year's report card.
I have a question in particular about those initiatives at the high school. I know in October, we looked at the building level goals, September or October, is that right? And we really dug into sort of each building's goals, and as you mentioned earlier, you know, the information from these report cards is going to be used in every single building. And we have seen how that plays out, and I have no doubt of that. And as you mentioned earlier, right, the, the high school really shows us the greatest area of concern in this year's report cards. And you've made allusions a few times to some of the very specific things going on at the high school that you and Mr. Drake are working on. Is that something that we did hear more about later in the year or in the coming year?
Yes.
And by that, I mean like, in particular, those initiatives at the high school?
Yep. So one of the items on the major goals and activities for the district is not only to develop the plan for improvement at the high school, but to follow up with a report on that. So when we take a look at bringing that information back at one of the future board meetings, whether it's part of the strategic plan update or it's a standalone report, there absolutely is not too many to do that, and that's one of the deliverables for the whole system.
That's wonderful. And another shout out to our excellent strategic plan, our plan, we have that in there. I personally would maybe like to see it as a, as its own agenda item, and I'm not supposed to be the same way, but to have it as a standalone, to keep it looking. Sorry, go ahead, I need.
I think that would be important to have that on a regular basis, I don't, it's a regular meeting, but maybe a regular meeting or something to, to, to go, because, I mean, that's, that's huge, I mean, we're a school, but it's not, you know, it's in that category. I think it's, you know, it's our responsibility to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to change that, and if we can hear what's going on, then that'll help us know that, you know, everybody's being accountable.
Any other folks have questions, comments, discussion on this? Yeah, I really appreciate your time with us and all of the intent background information that we've got here, it's very, it's a lot, and there are things to be concerned about, but things to be proud of as well. And I, for one, I'm really glad to hear what you have shared with us tonight about a lot of the initiatives that are in place right now, underway, and ongoing to address the gaps in our student performance. Thank you for that. Our next agenda item, don't move out of that seat, Brian, overlooking at our accountability report cards two point O.
And Brian, I'll just introduce this quick. Board members, I think you all know the history, but when these accountability report cards came out, it was determined right away that Menominee still has a whole child approach, and we've always had a whole child approach, and we continue with the whole child approach, meaning that certainly student achievement and the academic scores that our students receive on various state assessments are very important. However, that is a piece, not the only piece of what we try to do in our school district, and that's what we say with our mission and our vision and with our strategic goals. So at that time, knowing that the state accountability report was really lacking in some areas measuring other student success, we developed what was called the State Accountability Report Card Two Point O, and we continue to track progress on other measures beyond what was measured in the report card. So with this year's update on the report card two point O, Brian, go ahead, take it away.
Yep, thank you for that background. So over the years, the accountability report card, like the state accountability report card, has undergone a handful of changes. There really were new order changes as far as format, as far as what's being presented from last year to this year. We identified sixteen different categories that we felt weren't necessarily captured in the state report card data that we felt were pertinent to our district. And a real quick overview, in nine of those reported categories, we saw increases in a positive way, meaning we wanted to see increases in those areas. a positive way, meaning we wanted to see increases in those areas. We did have six categories that we noted, some decreases. That's fewer numbers of categories that we had increases than last year. And in one area, elementary science Olympia, we had five elementary schools over the period where we didn't have all five buildings offering science Olympia for various reasons coming out of COVID. But for the past two years, that number has remained consistent. And the overall number of students that participated was just a little bit less than prior year, but very nominal. And we're seeing some slight decrease in our overall elementary enrollment. So that's not something that is, is something that would be concerning to me. You know, it's one of the things that I want to point out is we are starting to see more and more students take transcript and credit courses, participate in dual enrollment courses, and participate in our, our CBTC Academy courses. I do anticipate at some point, we may start to see some decline in the number of enrollments in some of our advanced placement courses. And I don't necessarily see that as a bad thing because really those two things are on equal footing, where students can earn full secondary credit really either way. So as we see one go up, we may see one go down a little bit. But when we take a look at last year to this year, actually we saw an increase in our AP enrollments and an increase in the number of AP exams being taken, which to me is that one I was expecting, I'm just a little bit based on some of the rules we're seeing in some of the different countries. So without any, have you taken any questions?
So what you're saying with science Olympia is it can't grow from five elementary schools?
No, we have another elementary school, which I don't think we are.
Any questions for discussion here on the report card 2.0? I am, I noticed there's a slight, or there's a dip or a decrease in the advanced placement exams passed, not taken, scored three or above, but it still seems like it's an actually a very high number.
It is, it's just a little bit more.
Okay.
And, I mean, from, from my standpoint, when I look at those, more students attempting to take exams is a good thing. And, you know, if a student's going to take exams just because they know, know that they're going to get a three or higher, you know, while yes, that's nice, I would rather the student tend to take some.
Right. Do you know, and I apologize for not giving you a heads up on that statement, but do you know how that compares statewide? That 80.37?
I, I can figure it out, but I don't have that information.
But if you think about it, and you look at what's happening to college enrollments, it really isn't a surprise to see more of the dual credit opportunities with CBTC becoming more popular. And I'm just really glad we have that set up because we're ahead of the game in that.
Do you have a question, Emily?
Yes, thank you. Something that would be helpful was the, I think you categorized the same from year to year, so having, being able to look at the numbers now compared to last year. If that makes sense.
I think that's, that's something we can make sure that we make a point to do moving forward. And we can, we can also share last year's stuff.
And actually, taking a whole look at the report card 2.0 might be appropriate. You know, like when we talk about science Olympia, that was a goal to grow that program. And now that it's grown to capacity, you know, is it really something that should remain on the report card? Or should it be tweaked to talk about number of participants or something like that? It's probably a time for this report card to be evaluated. I still think it's an important piece, and I think we should continue to have it, but perhaps kind of revamping it to make sure it's current. And maybe with our strategic plan, maybe that'll help identify some areas that we want to set as goals or at least track through report card 2.0.
So to that point, a couple of these measures are now on the state report card too, right? Which doesn't mean we can't take credit for them in both places, but if we could maintain this beautiful graphic, which really is nice to look at, and like replace some of these with different measures if we wanted.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. I just wondered if any of these, I love that this exists, but as we're looking at demographics, maybe the total number of students decreases, but it's a lot higher number of, you know, students that are economically disadvantaged. So maybe we're, I wonder if you'd broken this down at all to, to see where the growth is happening, and maybe that could be a way of, of adjusting some of the goals. If we've got one that's staying pretty steady from year to year, maybe there could be a way to target improvement with a specific group of students.
That's, that's on my view.
You know, you know, you want spreadsheets for our notes. One thing that I've noticed is that in the 2.0 report card, we have high participation in the A.I.M. classrooms. But I also noticed that compared to statewide, we actually have lower participation in art classes at the high school level. So I think that's kind of interesting, right? That we have this amazing art program, but it's maybe not using actual like registered classes at the high school. So that's just something I noticed, not in commentary, just, I think it's an interesting
Being class is close K-12, so it's not necessarily, yeah, just like. Other questions or discussion? Accountability 2.0. All right, moving on, we have the 2024, 2025 budget revisions. And folks, just note, this document was updated today, I think, didn't it?
Yeah, Eric gave the notes on the bottom. Those are notes that we tried to include in this report just to give board members more of an idea of the process. Those are the only changes, I believe, Eric, is that correct?
Just in case people still have the old version up. Do you want to present anything about this or just jump right into questions?
Yeah, I can just say, so the, the majority of them are simply just moving money from one function to another. The one that might generate questions is the last one, which is Fund 73. So the rule is for the DPI, the revenue must equal expenses in Object 218 across all funds. So Object 218 refers to the transfer of trust funds. So Fund 73 is the trust fund for other post-employment benefits. So what happened, it seems that in Fund 10, in the budget, it already included expenses for transferring these funds into Fund 73. However, because the DPI requires that expenses have to match revenues allocated to it, this entry then is intended to record the revenue for Fund 73 that was not in the original budget. So as a result, there's no offsetting entry associated with it. And this was found when the DPI budget report was completed last week. It was found that these did not balance, and so this is simply just a transfer to make those balance across all the funds.
Thanks for that explanation. Are there any other questions or discussion on this? I have a question about this report in general. How much extra work would it be for you to add a column with just describing what the expense function is? So understanding that Fund 10, that expense function, 140,000 means what? And, and could that be noted in the report?
Absolutely, I can do that.
Okay.
Sure.
I, I would like that. I don't know if anybody else would. But if it's not hard.
It's not.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep. So this will come back to the board in January then. Typically, there'll be some additions that Eric will point out, but you can expect to see these changes for sure in what will be asked to have board approve in January.
I really like how you do that. It's very easy to read and understand, so very much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we are reviewing Rule 361 guidelines for reconsideration of educational materials. We discussed this at our last meeting, and we have a first read of a revised rule and some background here. Do you want it?
Yes, it was brought up by the board in November, that the board would like administration to review the rule related to the reconsideration, reconsideration of educational materials. Since that time, we have done a study to identify what is fairly typical in terms of the timeline for having materials reviewed. In Monomie, our current rule states that if a book, let's say, is challenged from the library, it can only be challenged once in a one-year period, 12 months. In looking at that and based on the suggestions from the last board meeting, we found that actually one year is a very short amount of time compared to what many schools have. For instance, Eau Claire has four years, Chipple Falls, River Falls, Boysville, Colfax, they're all five years. And then there's a number of schools that don't have a defined time period for when a book could be reconsidered again. Now, this is not a board policy, so it's an administrative rule that can be changed. However, I, you know, I like to make sure that the rules are in alignment with the wishes of the board. Based on this, I'm looking at what other schools are doing, I think it would be appropriate if the board would like to extend it to five years to go ahead and do that. I do think it's important to note, though, that even if it was put into five years, our current policy has a provision that allows for books to be reconsidered early, even in the one-year timeframe. If a majority of the reconsideration committee wants that book reviewed, it can do so at any time. So even if we push it out to five years, and there was a reason that came forward that was not known, or whatever the case may be, we still would have the ability to have that book forward earlier than the five-year period. So I guess, I'm just looking for board feedback on whether or not you would like this rule changed. And if you do, is the five-year mark what you would like?
I, of course, would like it to be indefinitely, but I will compromise at five years.
The only thing I'll say about indefinite, Amy, is that I think that actually could work the other way more likely. I think in most of those cases, what indefinite would mean is that it could be even less than the year that we currently have.
I, I support five years.
Great, thank you. Any other thoughts on this rule change on that number of years? Five years seems to support us with the, the five year, five years is the largest group here on this list we're looking at. So it seems to support us with the majority, including the districts closest to us. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I think five years with the provision for extenuating circumstances is a good use of our resources while still leaving room if something else came that was appropriate. Can I say what that is?
So extenuating circumstances, you mentioned, Joe, that the reconsideration committee would decide if there are extenuations. How's it get to them? I mean.
I, I would either have a meeting with them or send them a memo and gauge the thoughts of the reconsideration committee, depending on what the situation was.
Okay, so it could come to them even though it's not five years.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I just.
For instance, you know, where I could see is potentially with, you know, a federal law change, you know, there's so much stuff that's tied up right now in the courts. You know, there could be a law change in terms of what is appropriate in schools and what is not, what's required in schools and what is not. And certainly, that would be a trigger for something like, like this to potentially happen.
I think it's important to note that even though this process has been used most recently for library books, it also applies to curriculum books and books used in classrooms. So I think Joe's point is, is a good one, right? We may find something out, and in particular, the book that's used in active instruction, that could be, could easily trigger an extenuating circumstance.
Well, are there any objections to move into five years? Okay, we'll make the change and get that published. Thank you.
Should clarify, we don't have to go down it?
No, it's an administrative rule.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next up, we have information for the 2025 school board election. The Monomie's area school district will hold a school board election on Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. Three positions are up for reelection, incumbents, myself, Abe Smith, and Dominique Stewart. Candidates must complete a campaign registration statement and declaration of candidacy by 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 7th of 2025. These documents can be submitted, should be submitted to the school district, to the committee, right here at the ASC. All of their important information and dates can be found on the election page of the district's website. To my fellow incumbents, the deadline for us to file non-candidacy paperwork is Friday, December 27th, and that form is attached here in board talks. Any questions about the 2025 school board election?
I would just like to point out, Rachel, that with winter break, the district office will be closed for several days around the Christmas holiday and New Year's holidays. We will have everything posted on the door here at the ASC in terms of when the building will be open. But if people would like to take the paperwork in, we would encourage you to do that before the break or after. But we'll certainly try to work with any situation that comes up.
Thank you. All right, there's no other questions. Next on the agenda, we have legislative advocacy. So legislative attention, now that the election's over, is going to shift toward the next state budget. The state of Wisconsin will create a budget in 2025. There are, there's a link in our board notes to Governor Evers has several budget listening sessions, the process date, I think the first of which maybe already happened. And the, we also have a link to the budget request from our state superintendent. And a legislative update from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards that is, well, you can re-listen here, but detailing what was these priorities will be.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that the state of Wisconsin is actually in a very good financial position right now. There's a general fund balance of surplus of $4 billion. Also, Wisconsin's tax burden has been at historic lows when comparing. And also is noted that K-12 spending levels used to be, Wisconsin used to be 11th in the country in 2002, and in 2020, it dropped all the way to 25th in the country. So I think there's a good case to be made for providing public schools with additional funding. However, I do think it's going to, like any state budget, there's a lot of difficulty in trying to prioritize. And I think it's really important that public education does have a voice in this process. I linked in there, I actually appreciate the suggestion that you provided. With the redistricting, you can see we have had some changes in terms of representation. We have a pretty large district, so we're represented by a number of people in the Senate and the Assembly. Also, point out that Rob Stabsold has been appointed a member of the joint finance committee. And Rob has been in our school district a number of times. He's always been very willing to have a conversation. Also, Shannon Zimmerman, even though he's not one of our representatives, he's just west of here over in River Falls. And then finally, I would just like to point out that Clint Moses, he won reelection, and, you know, Clint used to serve on the school board. He's always been very good with his time in terms of, if I had a question related to the state legislature, he actually provided some of this information for me as well. And he'll continue to keep regular communication in terms of the budget process, what's happening. He was real helpful in providing an opportunity for me to speak to the joint finance committee when the meeting that they had over at UW Sel was held a couple of years ago. And he has committed to trying to help that happen again. So, you know, politics aside, and not making any political comment on that, I understand that it is nice to have connections with our state legislators.
Yeah, I think that's, that's really good to be able to make communication. And I hope we can, we can keep building those out. One kind of complicating thing that I think is worth keeping in mind is that we did not, our district did not pass a referendum in the past year. Many of the adjacent districts did, and many of the process stated it, it's over 100, or not 100 passed, but something like eighties was the exact number. So it may be the case that fewer districts are speaking out to. So it may be the case that fewer districts are speaking out to their representatives in a kind of situation that they find themselves increasingly crunched by the state budget. And so it might be an arm of a voice as a district who might be more important to hear because other districts that have, that didn't pass a referendum maybe have their attention elsewhere for a little while. So that's where people might, I don't think we can, you can't just go along with the crowd, I think we actually should speak out in as productive a way as possible to make sure that all the state legislators are someone that understands kind of the situation that is in and what our forecast looks like, and how we can build good relationships over time.
Would this be something that we could have on the SDMA website in the, like, community or get involved part? Is just a short legislative advocacy piece?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate. You know, we also have our messages that go out to our families, you know, some sort of school crossings type of deal, and we give the information. I think that would be a good idea.
Some thinking in particular of people who don't necessarily have a student in the district, but who want to, to be supporting the school district and how they could get involved, just a very short, regular, I know I'm adding anything to my sentences, hesitant, but, but that might be a, a nice way to increase involvement there.
I would like to just agree with what Abe said, taking it on that. Even some referendums that have passed, they're still struggling. I know, I saw an article in the newspaper that Chippewa Falls is still going to be hiring every seven hundred thousand dollars for a couple of years in there, so they're still going to have to figure out how to come up with that money or cut their expenses. So a referendum is not always a huge fix, not only that, but if you notice a number of school districts that go to a referendum over and over and over again because their money runs out. So that's important that we definitely let our legislators know that education is important to our communities.
One thing I think we learned in the referendum that happened last year, you know, right about this time, twelve months ago, talking with people in the community, was that, not surprisingly, most people don't understand how the state budget happens, what decisions are being made, or even what, how, how this, how our district relates to what happens in Madison in the budget process. And the idea that, you know, some of the things we'd like, we'd like to decide or look at are fixed at the state level. So I think that, you know, has always looked for educational opportunities to help the public kind of see that there's this process going on at the state level, and it really does impact what happens in Monomie.
To that end, you know, there was a point where we had legislative advocacy on the agenda once a month, I think, those are there, special board meetings. And in particular, that was the case in the kind of ramping up to the twenty twenty three biannual state budget. I don't know if it feels appropriate right now to, to go back to that, as we are getting ready to draft options on twenty five budget. There will probably be opportunities for attending listening sessions in partic, you know, particular moments in time where it's particularly powerful to reach out to those representatives and also information to share. Is that something we could go back to putting on the agenda in January? Does that make sense to folks? It may be as short an agenda item as just some of those updates, but I think it'd be helpful to keep that fresh. And, you know, to your point of reaching people, not everybody listens to our, watches our school board meetings, we know that, but everybody is, or anybody is even looking at the agenda, that might be a little nudge too.
And, you know, I think Cam's point about, you know, writing something up, that would be a perfect opportunity. I could draft something, bring it to the board next meeting. We also have our mid-year budget hearing in January. I don't know if the Joint Finance Committee's schedule will be out yet at that point, but if it's not at that point, it'll be shortly after. So yeah, even just a monthly check-in would be helpful, I think.
Yeah, that's great. The WASB, the special meetings we had on the board, right? Or was that the preference? Because there's so many other things on our regular hearing.
Yeah.
So does that make sense, you would have a second meeting in each one?
I vaguely recall you said that to you, you know, to WADA, you had kind of regional contact with, with the Assembly and, you know, people in the Joint Finance Committee. Is, is it still true that the WADA and also kind of CISA-based, three home groups are having those discussions?
Yes.
I mean, they're way, if you, well, you don't have to answer that, but if there's ways you suggest that this board base can evolve as a board, I think it'd be very interesting.
Great. Yeah, and I think from the board level, working through the Wisconsin Association of School Boards probably is the best. However, I'll keep my ears open, and it'll also keep you informed in terms of what I'm doing, and, and that way there might be an opportunity. And I should point out too, our work plan does include an item, you know, so this is already some of the work that we planned on doing in terms of building upon having the efforts of state legislators and local community partners and advancing the next state budget and report to the board progress by June thirtieth. So this is right in the house of what we said we were going to do.
Other questions or discussion on legislative advocacy? All right, we're being so little today. Next up, we have Department of Education, impact on our school district. I was just wanting to take.
Sure, so I appreciated this suggestion in front of agenda as well. You've all seen the national politics and discussion about the possible closure of the U.S. Department of Education. Kind of remains to be seen exactly what's going to happen with that. I did include, you know, kind of for this meeting, first of all, just a clear, a clearer understanding of what does the U.S. Department of Education do. Also, I appreciate the word that Brian and Eric did in terms of providing a spreadsheet, just kind of showing the funding levels that we have. If you look, it's about one point four, one point five million this year in terms of federal funding. I haven't seen anything that was suggested that federal funding would go away. However, it sounds like, you know, if the Department of Education is disbanded, that may move to a different department. Also, you know, the Department of Education is real involved with investigations and mitigating discrimination issues. I don't think that would go away either, however, it, again, may be moved to the Department of Labor or something like that. But that's information for the board, and I guess if you have questions, Brian and I can try to answer them, or if we can't answer them, we certainly can get the information and report back.
This break comes very helpful and important. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the effort they went into this, and the kind of look at what does it mean if something like that were to happen? And that's obviously something we'll be monitoring and watching as we progress. Any other questions or discussion regarding the Department of Education? This is noted in the cost breakdown, which is to say they'll allow, you know, our meal funding, food service funding actually comes through the Department of Agriculture and not the Department of Education, so that is the, don't hold supper beast, fortunately. Any other questions here? We are on to items related to next meeting dates for committees and reports. Folks, don't forget, we have a arbitrary tier at five o'clock next Monday, December sixteenth. December twenty third to thirty first, no school for students and staff. There will not be a special board meeting this month. The deadline for school board incumbents, as mentioned earlier, file notice of non-candidacy is September twenty seventh, no school January first. School board candidate deadline is January seventh. Our mid-year budget hearing is scheduled for January thirteenth here at five P M. Oh, no, not here. That's right. At the chair lecture hall at the high school, and that will kick off our tour of the schools. So we'll be having our first January meeting at the high school. Our January special meeting will be at the middle school. There is no school on January twentieth, I'm all over the place on this list, bear with me, and many of us will be attending the Wisconsin State Education Convention on January twenty second to twenty fourth. Questions on any of the upcoming agenda, uh, meeting dates for committees and boards? Thank you.
I just wanted to point out that I wish Tony a happy birthday, birthday today. So nice that Tony spent her birthday evening with us. Also a belated birthday.
Happy December, birthday is here.
Yeah, and also a belated birthday to Jenny and Brian last week.
Angie's was yesterday.
Angie's was yesterday, and, and then we'll be having a big night in January with both the budget hearing, or the mid-year budget hearing and the regular meeting, that'll be Sam's birthday.
Oh, no, 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 it's my anniversary, it's my wedding anniversary.
Oh, that is, same day. Interesting.
And missed all the hunting season. I heard you did.
Very good.
All that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So, all right. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.